Welcome everyone to the regular meeting of Moose Lake City Council for August 8, 2022. And we'll start with a pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item is approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or changes in the council? Senior Administrator. I have one change I'm gonna make. Under six I, I'm gonna move that up to after three is completed. And then we'll go back into the regular agenda. With that, any other requests? Minna, the motion to accept the agenda?
No.
Do I have a second? One second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Under number two consent agenda, we have the minutes, the regular city council meeting on May 11, 2022. Any discussion or questions on the minutes?
Motion approved.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Moving on to number two B, financial reports. Number one is the city accounts payable for May 2022. Number two is the city financial statements for May 2022. And number three is the liquor store profit-loss statements for May 2022. Have any questions or discussion on the financial reports? No problems?
Motion approved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Moving on to two C. This is number one, settlement and release agreement between the city of Moose Lake and Michael McNulty. Are we looking for consensus or do you want a motion?
We have to have a motion.
Okay. If, if there is an agreement with all the members, you should have all got the information, I know it.
I'll make the motion to accept the settlement and release agreement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Moving on to number three, this is for public comment. This time reserved for comments from the public on matters not listed on the agenda. Please keep comments to three minutes.
Hello, I'm here today because I've had a lot of issues with ATVs in my road. They've been speeding, I've had dirt bikes doing wheelies coming through my neighbor's yard. And I have reached my tipping point where I was gonna set up with it. Normally, I don't like to come and complain and not offer a solution, but I've got no idea how we can fix this. And it's not even just on the weekends anymore. I had a guy fly by last month. He went by twice. I'm assuming he's out of the campground, but I don't know. I called 911 on that one and I never heard anything. And I would have to assume that the police have better things to do than chase a bunch of kids on ATVs. The only idea I've got that I would love to see is we ban them outright in our town, in city limits. I think the reason we have so much traffic up here is because they come from the cities where it has been banned in their town because of the way they arrive, their machines. I think we could easily write a city ordinance banning them and still permitting local residents within the city limits access to the trails from their homes. You know, I, I know a couple of kids in town that drive by my house going to the trails. I work with one of their dads. And their kids are respectful and obey the laws and I have no issues with them. People that I generally have issues with, I see them once. And that tells me they are not from where I live. And so, yeah. I'll keep coming every month if I have to to try to figure something out. But I'd like to see something get done this year. Fortunately enough, I think during the pandemic, it wasn't terrible last year. The year before it was bad, but last year it seemed kind of calm. But I'm already off go-bad start this year. And I know if anybody, you know where I'm at, I live on Seventh Street across from the old school. So I tend to get the campground traffic. I know we've had kids going by on golf carts again. They're usually not a problem because golf carts can't go that fast. But I've had golf carts go by at night with no lights on and that's dangerous too. So, yeah, that's all I got. Hopefully, yeah.
I have a question for Darren.
Darren, could you come on?
I can. I was gonna address that anyway on my part.
My question is, isn't that, my understanding is that is the way it is? It's you're only supposed to be able to take the road from your city directly to the trail.
Right, yeah, they're not supposed to be driving all around. We did have a couple that were from the campground that we did stop and I think sighted because they had some that were running right through the stop signs. One of them was a dirt bike. We did a saturation where we had six game wardens here over the weekend. Myself and one of ours, we stopped 100 ATVs in a five-hour period of time. So, yeah, it is, gets to be a lot. And that's what we're trying to find that mix because it is tough for homeowners that have them come by and do something special if they have kids. We reduced speed limits in two places where we've had higher complaints from 30s down to 20s. Most of the people we stopped, I mean, and there's packs of 15 driving in a row. And anybody that lives on the street probably doesn't want to see that coming by on a regular basis. But if they're not breaking the law, that's a sat ATV route in the city. That's where they're traveling. But for the most part, you know, we're keeping them off of the state highways because they can't be there. Industrial roads and that new section of trails where they're supposed to be. We've had some talks with Holiday about putting in a new bridge because, to get to the businesses because that really shouldn't be to us or any of the ATV clubs because it's their personal business. So they're gonna be putting in a bridge or at least funding it.
Putting in a bridge.
I don't know, maybe responding back. But anyway. It, I don't know, we had a meeting with MINDOT today about the restriping project over the bridge where they plan to take a look at possibly shifting the two lanes a little bit on the bridge and creating a separate ATV lane through there with some delineator posts that can be taken down for snow plowing. So Phil and I met on that this morning. So MINDOT had their engineers here looking at a few different things. So they're trying to figure out options for all these things. It's, you know, I understand where Rob's coming from because, you know, where do you, I mean, it's a lot. I mean, even for us out there working it, they're just everywhere. I mean, like I said, most of the times we probably have 500 here a weekend. You know? Yeah. So it's like, you know, where do they go? What do they do? Yes, it's good for business here. We see Holiday's pumps are full all day long with them. It's just a portion of, you know, if we look at some residential areas that they're not allowed. But then you have the one homeowner that lives there, well, I want to drive mine from here to here, you know? So it's just gonna be trying to find that balance, you know? Maybe we look at it again or with some committee or have some other people. Like I said, I appreciate you even thinking about options because what are they? I mean, we can all sit and say, I don't like this, I don't like this, but we gotta have a solution for it. And we try to work around as much as we can from enforcement to design to, you know, whatever. The DNR asked again today about parking form here since the depot's no longer available. And there really isn't an option here besides the county went out closer to the freeway of expanding that. The city really doesn't have the property for that. We've all met, we've driven around, we've looked at different sites for it, it just doesn't.
Have they ever looked at the airport?
I don't think, I know we talked about it and stuff like that. We were gonna talk to, I think Greg from the county to see about it.
It's a large open area right next to the trail.
Right. So, yeah, that's another area we can look at. Because I know we talked about on the north end of town, which again, doesn't really lose business for us because most of the ones that are coming in are coming from the south. And there's no way to get back on them, so they have to come through town anyway. So, yeah, to answer your question, I mean, we stopped in town. We have things in the campground on their, you know, website for when they book in. They have all the rules and regulations. And we passed on flyers to everybody, we're trying to get new maps for them. And I get it when you call, it's like they're probably gone by the time you get there unless they're in the campground. But, yeah.
Is Jeff handing out the maps or the rules and the maps at the campground?
Well, I know we put it on the website, so they should have it. And we gave them the stack and haven't heard that they run out. So we'll get them some more. Because we told them that too, when you see them come in and you know they're pulling some ATVs on the back, those are the people that definitely you gotta target, make sure that they know this. So.
Yeah. I know it's no easy answer. We've, this has come up many times in the past 15 years. And since it's was passed for legal to drive in the city, I know it's come up probably four times to ban it. And that has never passed to ban it. So I, we tried to work with what we have and make the rules available and more strict. And maybe we can be more strict with what roads they can. That's probably not a bad idea, what streets they can actually drive on.
Yeah, it doesn't get those few and you're already trying to keep more of the seriously heavy residential. Because I get it if you're getting that campground, you're in traffic. Because we did have some that were running right through every stop sign and speeding. So we know what's happening, it's just a matter of how many can you catch? You know, when you go fishing, you don't catch all the fish in the lake. So it's pretty tough, but, you know. And I get, I get the frustration, you know, like I said, if I was living there and I saw them all coming by over and over again and somewhere, you know, pretty loud, even though that they're doing the speed limit, you got groups of 15 on a pretty regular basis, it's, it's to be a lot.
Darren, would you appreciate having a committee from a city perspective established?
I think we could, I mean, we could get, you know, some different groups, somebody, you know, like from the county ourselves here, some, you know, the residents around the area that are interested or having any issues. And trying to maybe look at how we maybe manage the flow of it. But even right now, the bulk of the people that are stopping, they just don't know where they're going or what to do. And it's an education piece, but when it's new people every weekend coming in, you lose that piece. So, and then we're always usually shorthanded, we can't do, get six game wardens and us every weekend. You know, it's just one person out there trying, trying to do it. So, but yeah, we should look at maybe doing that. And if we have some interest or whatever, maybe narrow the routes down a little bit more.
Sure.
Thank you. Very good.
I'm Arnold Beeler. I live up in the Taylor Park. I'm a past resident 25 years ago. I was here in Moose Lake. I've lived back now for two years. First of all, I'd like to know, city ordinances, what do we have for ordinances in retrospect to cars and vehicles and junk parked along the streets that are there forever? That have sunk into the road surfaces, full of junk sitting there. The, it's ridiculous, I think. We go down here to, what is it, Fourth Street and...
Yeah. You tied it on to Sioux Hill?
Yeah, or, well, no, no, I'm talking about over here, across from the Veterans Park. Right across the street, there's demolition cars been parked there. There's so many vehicles on that corner, it's an eyesore. And I, I'd like to see some of this cleaned up. Right down the street here, two residents south of the chiropractor. The front yard, there's old mattresses laying there stacked up that wind up having to be a health hazard. Rotations have to be getting into those. Stuff like this. I, I love this community. And my concern is that we, is there ordinances to address this?
They're online.
We do have, we do have an ordinance that addresses some of these. And so I'll give you a copy of this before, before you leave. So I have submitted a copy for you. What, what we're running into is it's not all inclusive. So we actually share your sentiments and your concerns in the background. It was something that I'm working on with Chief Jutman to redefine this ordinance to make sure that it's more inclusive to our current needs. In addition, we are, have some process pieces that we're working on from a city perspective in order to be able to cite residents for violating this ordinance. So we have two avenues that we're working on. And it's A, redefining this ordinance, and then B, the process piece of being able to actually issue citations for this. So.
Yeah, I know what I was, Arnie's talking about. Because we did talk to the one right on the corner, across from Veterans Park, that these vehicles need to be moved, the registration's out of date. They don't look like they run. And now they're starting to collect a little bit more. And the one, they've got, I think, four of those derby cars sitting out there.
Another block, the next block.
They got 30 days and it's gotta be an operating vehicle. If it's not, it has to be completely closed in, fenced in.
There you go.
So we'll get them out of there. I mean, but it's just, you pick at one, even the one with the mattresses, we hit the other one. The person that lives there had a different one, they cleaned that one up. This one's a mess. So, and whether it's log grass, we have that too, you know, I have any more issues, they gotta be able to cut. But we could spend all day going around and doing it, but we do, I agree, I think it's eyesore, you know, to get it out there.
Eyesore and telltale, there's your little mosquitoes on the long grass. And that is not quite such a concern. But the, the new lift station up there on Fourth Street where it goes up to the park, RV park. Why did they stop taring that street halfway down? Why didn't they go to the?
That's gonna be redone, right, the whole section?
And the city streets are almost impassable to drive on.
We're working on that too.
Yeah, I know, it costs money, it costs money.
But I feel the same thing. Thank you for bringing it up. It irritates me too. And we talked about it even prior to this, that that stuff needs to get cleaned up. So we're addressing some of our ordinances that need to get cleaned up to meet standards.
Yeah, it, to me, there's been a deficiency for several years here, you know, and it's got out of hand. So that's one thing I'm concerned about is that I like Moose Lake. And I want it to look like a nice little city inviting people to come and live here. You know, and business expansions. We need the money. All right, thank you.
If also you're there happy to do the summary, you can come yell at me.
Ah, I will. All right, thank you. I'll excuse myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Feel free to follow.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any public, more public comments? Grab you're gonna move you up?
This is different. Different, okay. So Sam's Automotive Detailing is doing our car show during Agadaze. He wanted to know if I could bring in a tent with beer there to try to bring people into his area more. I said, that's super pushing it, there are meetings tonight and I have no idea, I'm not asked anybody. So I'm just kind of throwing it out there. If it is too late to talk about that, that's fine with me. If it's not, I'll just throw in a license request and we can do it, whichever you guys think.
Where is that?
Oh, it'll be at Agadaze, he's doing a car show.
Where, you think?
Sam's Automotive Detailing.
And where is that located?
Right, right over in the grass section of the event center or arena.
They're gonna do a car show?
It's not, isn't it?
I thought it was gonna be over at the park.
Oh, is it at the park? He's setting the grass section of the arena is what he.
Maybe it is that. I assumed it was gonna be over at the.
I said, I said, all they could do is go ask and I said, I have no idea.
If there's any car show, it would be, oh, that's Agadaze and aren't in the park.
Yes, it'll be on Sunday.
I, they always have a car show, I think.
Yeah, it's gonna be Sunday, I know the meetings with, you know, Agadaze Committee, things that were on that, that was talking that they were gonna have one. I thought for some reason it thought it was the park, but maybe not. And I already called the park here, yeah.
They would not have it at the arena. There's no room for it there at Agadaze.
I'm pretty sure it's in the park, he thought the same thing at the meeting, that's what we were told, but.
Okay, yeah, I, I'm just going, he requested if I could go, I said, man, I don't know. I have no idea, so. So that was it, so you guys wanted to discuss. If you have any questions, I'll answer it. But, yeah, I know it's last minute and if I, if I did go to do it, then after you submit a request, probably even tomorrow, but.
When, when is Agadaze?
July 16, 17.
So we would.
It'd be a Sunday if they're gonna do it.
When it's all, you could still apply for the next city council meeting, no?
Yeah, it takes, it takes almost a month to process.
It does, I think there's a process period. And so I believe our meeting's on the 13th of July.
Yeah, and I phoned over just yesterday. He's, he's trying to get more people to come to there to make it bigger or whatever. I don't, you know, that's his thought behind the reasoning or whatever. So, yeah, until I come to the city council meeting and see what you guys say. And I totally understand this is, I'm not even pushing it, I'm just asking.
If it's a thing that the council's comfortable with, my recommendation would be, you know, approving a temporary off-sale license contingent upon, you know, whatever contingencies you have. And then I'd work with Sean on approving the permit and getting it submitted.
No, I don't really see anybody, the only thing would be is that's on a Sunday. There's hours of operation, I don't know what time the car show is, aren't they usually more in the morning?
So 11 a.m. to 3 p.m., is what anybody told me.
I just thought it was really early then, it probably.
He just wanted me to be there to help bring people in, whatever, you know?
Who would be serving alcohol at the muni or someone else?
I would be front of the meeting was there or, you know, either one. Or he wanted me to be there, I don't care if, you know, he wanted both of us or one of us only or whatever. Like I said, it's more, he just wants to have something there to kind of try to bring more of a depth feel to it.
But after the council. I think he's, I don't, he's not asking the munis, so it'd be all your personnel and your cost.
Yeah.
But that, it's up to be after the council on, if they want to consider it at this point, contingent on.
It'd be your liability and the car?
Yeah, I owe a $2 million insurance certificate, I just split the six agents of those a year. You guys would be listed as other insured in case anybody tried to say, hey, it's city property, whatever the case may be. I have that worked, figured out in black and white, no problem there. It's just, it's literally like, you know, a few days away from not being able to get that permit. That's why I just had to ask.
Recommendation by the senior administrator, I guess, except the council. I have no options to.
I don't believe that we turned down any, any requests in the past that meet all legal requirements. And I think they've been a good fit for the reason I'm always coming in and trying to do it. It's very fast, they ask the right questions. So I think that they have handled it right. I think that we, if we do approve it, then we should look at this afterwards and see if there were any issues that need to be addressed or if it was not a success. And it wasn't family type of that type deal that doesn't fit in with what we're doing. That's something we have, like to look at, otherwise I'm trying, trying.
Elaine, do you have any input?
Thank you, Sean.
I mean, I don't have any problem with it, it's just.
I mean, I think it's a really, it's a short event too, so it's kind of like, just gonna be down there. Spilling back, you know, eating that beer. Great.
Yeah, I, a couple beers, I should say some cokes. Yep. You know, I mean, we're, that's my only, but it's not.
Yeah, about motion? We made a motion on this, correct?
We would.
Motion approved.
Do I have a second? One second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carried. We moved you up also. We moved you up at this time, so you can come up to the podium. And this is Moose Lake Brewing Company, small brewer off-sale license.
You want me to speak to what this is about a little bit?
Yeah, please.
So the Minnesota Brewers Guild has worked on this one for about three years. It's piggyback with the crawler loss. So some of the bigger breweries that make over 20,000 barrels of beer a year can go back to selling crawlers. They succeeded in all this, so it's statewide legal now. Municipalities have the right to grant or not to grant all the legal ramifications or all the legal, legal parameters, I should have said. So what I'm asking is that, my part of this that I would put into, is I'm a brewery that makes 2,000 or less barrels a year. It's a small brewers license. And I could, instead of selling only a half a gallon or 750 milliliters, one purchase per guest per day, they could buy a four-pack. So why this one hits home with me a lot is because the four-packs I can make with a machine, with one guy, easier to produce, less time, less cost per container. And like beers like the higher alcohol, like the whiskey chip or some of our other beers that are, you know, eight to 12 percent, 750 milliliters is too much of that one container for one person to bring home and consume. I mean, it's just, it's dangerous. So it would open up another sales opportunity for me to be able to do that. Statewide, it was just legalized the 10 minutes before I brought you the application, so, yeah. And then any questions you'd have, I'm very well versed in, I could answer all the questions involved with this. But it's one, one purchase per person per day, they could bring home a four-pack. We'll never do sixes, we're only gonna do fours. Shouldn't say never, four, now we're only doing fours. So they could buy a four-pack of the whiskey chip instead of a 750 milliliter container of the whiskey chip. That's the difference.
Chief, any, any input?
No, I mean, they've always been great, run a great establishment there. And we've never really had any issues. So I think it's probably a good plan. It's, you know, it's a safety issue for some of the people. It's good to see that that's part of the concern, so I think it's a good plan.
Elaine, any input?
Okay, I think that's a good idea.
Melissa?
So we've approved all of their licenses for the brewery and we've never had an issue, so.
Council, questions, any more motion?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Thanks for coming. Please, Chief. Court for May 2022.
Mayor, members of the council, some of that we've already covered. We'll run through our May totals. We had 280 calls per service, 77 extra patrol, 87 traffic stops, not including the 100 ATVs we stopped. We had 28 community engagement events, nine assists to other agencies, and 87 calls per service along two medicals. So summer's definitely kicking into here this month already. Like I've talked to somebody already, the mental health thing seems to be our biggest challenge right now. We probably want to do those calls almost daily. So it's tying us up for quite a bit of time. But we're moving forward, trying to find some other options on a few things. But I think it's probably here to stay. We'll just deal with that as it comes. But a couple of our squads were damaged with hail over this last, you know, go-around like everybody else here. I've talked to Alyssa and I guess Phil and everybody's gonna try to get everything together and we'll move forward with the damage on that. We brought up last time about the new AEDs, we are getting those. So I'm sending the one officer up to UMD for training. So we'll get brand-new AEDs for the department. And we're also getting some of the ones from the county that are still functional that they were just gonna get rid of. So we decided to take some of those so we can supply more areas around the city here. So we'll be getting those coming in. And, yeah, we brought up the ATV thing in the meeting for today with MINDOT. So I think it was really nice that MINDOT's taking it serious to be on down here with a lot of their engineers and looking at plans to try to do this. I don't know, I thought it was a pretty good meeting today, Phil was out there. So, okay, we'll look and see where it goes. Mary from the DNR was there for the grants. And now that it is moving up and over there, that is part of the grant aid trail system. So then we are eligible for grant money to do some of these projects.
I have a question, Darren. When you're talking about ATVs, you're all inclusive with like a side-by-side?
Yes, yeah.
Do you find, what do you find is the most problem machine? Is it?
It's the side-by-sides right now that are just driving right down the main lane of, from one end of town to the other with little kids in there with no helmets and just, you know, going right through town. And, you know, most of the people just don't know where to go. It's an education piece and everybody's been pretty polite that we've dealt with. You know, of course, we get some that aren't too happy. We stopped a couple of the people more than once during the day for speed or different things on certain trails, so. Yeah, but we had a busy weekend and it was good to kick it off. But we'll have new people, you know, this weekend and next weekend. Some will be the same, but it's, yeah, I mean, the trail routing and stuff like that's gonna help a lot. We did do some markings on some of the pavement. But we'll see over the bridge, but I think people are starting to get the, get the message. Yeah, but it's usually the side-by-sides, they think, I gotta try. Yeah, but it's usually the side-by-sides. They think, I got traffic, I got lights, I got brakes, so I can drive down the lane in traffic. No, you can't, so, but other than that, that's what all I have. It's, uh, yeah, we're busy, but if you guys have any questions.
I just really like to see the traffic stops are way up. Uh, the proactive, uh, leases and police departments, they're greatly appreciated, especially in, uh, the areas residential. I've seen squads stop and people aren't using stop signs. And, uh, we guys are stopping them, so I just appreciate that.
Yeah, I would all appreciate that, because it's one of those things we had talked a little while back about that. You know, we need to start picking that up. It's a small town, you know, lock that balance of things. Uh, you don't need to go crazy, but you need to start forcing some of this stuff. It's the only way it's gonna keep that balance. So when I send out that pie chart, I would want things to kind of balance on what you're spending your time on, so appreciate that. So, yeah, I'll mention it to everybody and everybody is kind of stepping it up, but.
Two hundred and eighty calls, that's a lot.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's, um, it's probably gonna be increasing all through the summer, but, yeah. But no, I don't know about, everything's going well. You know, we had a couple of people that were out on medical leave on their back, so that helps a lot, so. But, yeah, if you guys have any complaints or whatever, it's just easiest to go deal with them right away. You know, even with Arnie here tonight, hopefully he knows that we're looking at the same thing he is. So it's just a matter of things take time to get through that, but.
Thanks.
Yeah.
All right, sit down, please.
We'll move. Thank you.
City superintendent, department report for May twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, administrator Owens, um, very busy month. Um, if you, if you noticed, it seems like we're working on a different corner every day. Whether it's here, there, everywhere, it's, it's been very busy. Um, we'll start off through the water department. Uh, it's month of May, distributed five point three million gallons drinking water. Fire hydrants were ordered two months ago. One is installed, just down the street here. The other one we chose to remove, um, we're gonna, we're gonna reinstall that one. Um, by the time we got down to it, we figured out the utility conflicts we were gonna have as far as we're gonna have to move some storm sewer, we're gonna have to move gas line. Um, and then the water being was undersized there anyway for that leave, there was, there was no, there was no reason to put that back in place. Um, from that area, there was three other serviceable hydrants within three hundred feet of that one location and that hydrant's been hit three times since I've been here, so let's get it out there, right? So we removed that one, uh, which is great, because now we got a spare, which it seems like every fall we always need to have another one put in last minute and right now they're really tough to get. So we're good there. Sewer department, uh, collected twenty-one point two million gallons of wastewater, so we're way up. Everyone else is super wet, right? So that means INI is a problem, right? Right, so lining project, good stuff, right? Yes, absolutely. Um, I think we're talking about that later. Street department, pop-up building is always, we've been, uh, we've been a little lax on this, not gonna lie, we've been just spread pretty thin. Uh, we're gonna get it really hard here before the Fourth of July. Got a couple loads of hot mix coming in. Of course, a lot better for matching material if we have enough left over, which we will. So you'll see some of that happening here at the end of the month for sure. Um, laptop batching itself, as far as late batches, we're gonna start in on them. I think we got almost a dozen of them here. So there's, there's quite a few. Um, Forest Street Road Project, we're talking about that a little later here, too. Cemeteries, campground, park, uh, for the most part, everything's kind of firing on all cylinders here. Um, it's very busy, spread very thin. Guys are already tired, but we're, we're doing our thing. It's good, it's summer. I mean, everything's, it's, it's summer. We love it, so. Uh, the class five road to the fireworks shooting location, are you talking about that related? I'll hold off on that, too. Um, cemeteries, they're busy. I mean, weekly, weekly we're out there doing very, so it's, it's very busy. Um, yeah, kind of a sad thing, but at the same time, it's, it does take up a lot of our time. In your packet on page fifty, you will find a whole bunch of forms from Minnesota Pump Works. What those are are, uh, live station service checks. There's a lot of info right there. We're not gonna cover it all right now. If anyone has any questions, please track me down. I would gladly go over it with you to whatever detail you would like. Um, we are gonna talk about this a lot in September, because there's a lot of money we gotta spend and I really want to sign through those statements. So between Alyssa and myself, we're gonna, we're gonna do some discussing there. You're gonna see a pretty good amount of money, I think, in twenty twenty-three, where we're gonna have to build some of this stuff, so. Just, so it's not a shock in September, just, just throwing it out there, so. Um, I think that's all I have. Any questions?
I got one.
Go ahead.
That, I can't remember the name of what you call it, at the cemetery, the above-ground burial.
Column burial, yeah.
Yeah. Any word on that? When I go start?
Yes, we've, um, we've been working with Mike. We actually went to see some and got a good idea of like what would be the best fit for our usage, uh, what we liked, what we didn't like about some of the columnariums at other cemeteries in the area. Uh, we are waiting, um, and working with Mike on some quotes after having some of those experiences and seeing some of the other columnariums. So we have not yet purchased one, um, but we will be and then we'll keep you in the loop as far as what we end up deciding on and what timetables are at that point.
Look at four or five, and that was actually a really good move, because the first couple we saw were, I wouldn't have wanted. I mean, I, I thought they were, I thought they were junk.
That was duct tape involved.
There was, there was plastic, plastic containers involved, yeah. It was terrible. So, I mean, there's actually a few more I think we're gonna go look at. I think it's, at first I was thinking, you know, I got a lot better things to do than run around and look at these, but, um, it's, I'm really glad we went and looked at them, because they were, they were junk. And the, our community just noticed a lot of this stuff up there, and it's too bad. And that's just the way it is.
There were some that had double-door plates, so when, if one was already inscribed and in use, but the other side needed to be utilized, they would have to remove both as one unit and send it off.
Yeah.
And so then somebody else is sitting without their front placard and then behind it was just a plastic.
Yeah.
Um, case front that was taped on. I mean, there's.
It was bad.
So we've learned a lot and we found some really nice ones and, um, hopeful that they'll fall within the approved budget amount and that's kind of what we're working on in the background.
Because the last thing we wanna do is, we're all talking a lot of money, right, for the same. The last thing we wanna do is get it there and that would be what we found.
Right. Well, I guess if I could say something, if, if we find one that we want and it's a little beyond what we talked about, we should re-talk about it, because I don't want to spend that kind of money and just buy something to settle and it's not what we should have.
And that's where we were at. And this experience also gave us an idea of, you know, what cement work we want done with it and what, you know, how we want it laid out or what direction it's facing and all those different experiences and expansion opportunities. So, um, it's been really good. It's taking a little longer than we had anticipated, but, uh, we are making progress on it.
A little bit of effort in this is gonna turn these things up. Just gorgeous and the community will really appreciate it, so. Do you have a sort of view on the view?
Correct.
Okay, thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Yep.
Minnesota Brewers Department report for May twenty twenty-two.
Oh. Let's see. Fourth of July's been a long, uh, it's pretty much in place for that. So hopefully it's a more successful year than last year. It's gonna be really drawn, it's gonna be drawn out. We're gonna have events from the first through the fourth. The bands and it'll be made for a, so it's gonna be a long, fun weekend. We need, uh, cooler for the, under the bars still out here, but hopefully they'll be driven for the July. For, 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 yeah, whatever, but we're two kilometers from, from that. It's going, going well down there. It's busy. Tourists are back. Summer people are back, so busy. Um, do you have any questions?
Mr. Buston, how busy is this? It's nice to see all the, all the congress party there.
I haven't found a, I haven't found a, uh, ice cream truck yet.
Very good.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Fordy Technology Library Department's monthly update.
Yes, um, we've been working with Rory in the background, um, looking at some equipment quotes. And we have received, well, received some. They are not equivalent to one another, so we're kind of in the process of dissecting them and kind of trying to determine what our immediate needs are and then asking for quotes that are more, um, relevant to exactly what those specific needs are and making sure that we have two equivalent quotes to present. So that's kind of happening in the background. Rory's been working with the, um, school to secure an intern for some summer hours, which is excellent. So they'll be working on, you know, additional content and additional opportunities, so that's exciting. We'll have more information on that to come as well. The library did have a book sale. Uh, Laura mentioned that it was extremely successful. I should have numbers on that for next month, but, um, everything's going well in both departments.
We should talk about the room, our spare room over here, just to come and.
Sure, sure. So, um, there's an office directly adjacent to the council chambers. Um, it had turned into a storage facility primarily. Um, there was a space in there that, um, Rory was utilizing, um, as well for uploading and things of that nature. We are trying to do a little bit of a reorganization, um, hoping to, to find, uh, some space within our technology room and create a workstation in there. And, um, at that time, then the county would move into that office and have their own office space. That is part of our agreement with the county.
Township.
Or, excuse me, the township. And the township, um, it's part of our agreement with them. It's something that we've kind of been working towards. There are times where, uh, the township comes in and we have our workstations or are utilizing that space or they don't have any privacy. So I think it, I felt like it was important to give them a dedicated space as per their contract and then that allows us to expand our office space. So looking to give, um, fill an office space up there and the new admin position and a, a office desk as well. So this will allow us to accomplish all those things.
Township was real happy to hear that about, getting back an office.
Makes sense.
Township is very excited. And it was tough having them intermixed with, you know, whatever we had going on in that space. There was no privacy or, or differentiation, so this will give them a dedicated space to work in. And it's utilizing the space better than it was previously been utilized, so.
And then we still have a, a concern or a need for Rory and, um, technology none for a space? Because that space is pretty small as well?
It is pretty small. Um, we've been looking at what equipment is still in use, what equipment is no longer in use. We have workstations that we can utilize, um, in the library as well. Um, we can have one of those spaces potentially be where the interns at. Uh, we're gonna keep being creative and keep finding solutions and we'll make sure that everybody has what they need.
Great.
Any questions? City engineer monthly update, meeting minutes.
Yes.
Wanted to add a there.
There's a lot of information there. Um, wanted to just kind of extend an open invitation if anybody would like to ever attend in any of these meetings. They do get rather lengthy, um, but the impact is always there. Uh, great stuff is covered. A lot of the items that we covered this month will be, um, addressed later on within the meetings, but a couple of points that I did want to highlight. Um, as we've all seen, the trail, work on the trail has, um, initiated. We have a substantial completion timeline date of June seventeenth and then a final completion date of June twenty-fourth. So it's sounding like we'll be able to meet these timelines at this time. In addition, something that occurred this month is the LCCMR grant application was submitted. Uh, the application was for three point seven million dollars worth of funding for a campground expansion. Um, that has, uh, taken place throughout the course of the month. And then in addition, one thing we discussed heavily with the engineers and something we want to look at moving forward is making sure that, um, our budget activities align with timelines that are conducive to getting projects out for bid in a timely fashion. So we're gonna look at that when we look at the budget this, um, coming year and make sure that we're, our activities are aligning with what's best for, um, the bid process and for the city in that aspect. So it's something that we're having open dialogue with and that we're just gonna continue to work on to do better.
Maybe a little update on, since the legislature, that the state walked away from the table with nine billion sitting there, we're kind of up in the air on that project. We've been trying to work with the state facilities on the sewer. Old sewer line we have and the line we put in between roads right up to the front door. So it's kind of in a holding pattern and we're not sure what direction that's gonna go now. Because that was tied up with all that money and, and I don't, the governor has not called them back to the table. So I don't know what will happen. And I don't think, Phil, you've got any update for your contact up there? And I know you haven't either, Alyssa, so we're, we're just waiting. We're looking at options.
Yeah, the city engineers have discussed, um, options for moving forward without state funding at this time and what that looks like between DOC and what the city, um, could potentially budget for or could extend, um, in partnership with the project. So we are gonna open those conversations up versus, you know, waiting on, waiting on a hope and prayer. So we're gonna continue to work on that to make sure that we make progress. So our engineers are currently working on the next communication that will be distributed to all parties.
So for doing the INI, we can look at that area for INI funding and hopefully get their participation. Anything else on engineer report? Any questions? Very none. We'll move on to the chamber commerce updates. Ryan, give an update. Ryan? Update on chambers?
Oh, no. Thank you. I missed part of it. I had to leave early.
The chambers working hard on all their summer events, so they are, um, constantly looking for volunteers. They send out some great communications, have stuff on their website and on their, um, on their Facebook page if anybody's looking to get involved or to volunteer or to attend events. Um, in addition, they are, um, reworking their job description for their, they accepted a new job description for their executive director position and will be, um, posting for an opening for that position to, um, effective immediately, so.
Moving from a part-time to a full-time position. Probably promote in July sometime. Moving on to five briefly discussed business, five A later drive culvert crossing.
So last month I brought up, uh, what page are we on? Sorry, um, sixty-eight-ish? Yep, sixty-eight, looks like. Brought up a culvert we need, a box culvert we need to replace. Uh, I think we used to include those pictures, right? Oh, black and white. Okay, so, yeah. Seventy, seventy-nine of those pictures. Um, was asked to have some discussion with DOC. I, uh, got a little bit from them, but not much, but it was not a whole lot of, uh, cooperation on their end. Regardless, we still need to replace the culvert. Listen, I met with Ed Dalstrubbe. It was shortly after our last council meeting anyway and, uh, there's a response a year from them, pretty much saying, we're not really now. But we tried, so, uh, I guess I just circled those estimates right back in here for approval for tonight or, or discussion for tonight, exciting, what I get one here.
Here in the nose, his old state hospital crossing for cattle to their farm that they had on the opposite side.
Ed was, um, heard us, was listening, um, from, he shared from a perspective on up the line. If it's not on their property, it's hard for them to access and, um.
The funds, or.
Get funds, so that was the answer that we received.
So what do you recommend you, Phil?
We gotta do something. It's, it's in our right of way. When it fails, it's gonna be my phone that rings and it's gonna, we're, if it fails, we're gonna be by it like last minute, throwing it all there anyway, so. I've always been proactive to get things done and just keep things moving on.
Before we discuss more, how narrow do you, you place it? You put the metal on inside. of the wood because you pull the wood out or it's collapsing or what?
So, so we'll, we'll set the pipe first. We'll take the top off and believe we set the pipe in place, stay it so it doesn't, and then pull the sides and then completely backfill it. And then build a toast hole.
Pull everything off, strip it right down to the box, the wood box?
Correct. And then, you know, that's, that's all wood. And I mean, I don't, I don't care what type of wood it is. It's organic, so it will rot. So we do not want to leave that in there. It should come out. That's the right way to do it. So, I mean, regardless, if it fails, I mean, I, I get it. I get where you guys are coming from, but if it fails, it's going to be us. Anyway.
To be honest, when I went to look at it, I had more safety concerns after looking at it and seeing it in person than I did prior to. And I have a huge concern that when it's time for plowing, that we would, we could potentially have a bad scenario.
Now that we know about it and that some kids went in there and something happened and we hadn't acted, then it would be our fault too. I mean, there's.
Well, it's our fault regardless. It's in our right of way.
It is starting to cave in from the inside and then from the outside on top of the road, there are some issues and potentially send somebody or something off the road down into the.
So our lowest bid is 3,118.06.
Correct.
Yes.
Do you recommend them over?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep. Jerry does an awesome job and he's, he's right here, so.
I'll make a motion to accept. Thank you, Taylor. Sales.
Your second? Any further questions, discussion?
I'd like to see 3,118.06 added to the third line project. Then it's time, as a line I have, that's my only discussion, just because I'm frustrated with that. It was, it was for them and now the citizens are going to say, I'm going for something that you.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you, Phil. Moving on to 5D pedestrian bridge update.
Yes, on page 83 or it starts on page 80. The pictures start on page 83. I just wanted to give a little peek into what the public works department has been working on. We've got the communication from the county that there were some issues with our bridge, our pedestrian bridge. And so what I included in the packet was the fix that the public works department came up with. And the county is just absolutely thrilled with what we've come up with, so much so that they continue to come down here and take a look at it. So it went really well. We have completely satisfied all their requirements and it's done.
Thanks, Phil. Thank their crew, please.
Slow move, thank you.
Any else that's in on? 5C, old school property update.
Yes, I gave an update at our last economic development therapy meeting, so I just wanted to do the same here. I did have some communications with the owner of the old school property. A couple of items were addressed. He wanted to make sure that the neighboring residents and community was aware that he will continue to maintain the lawn and has hired a mowing service, things of that nature to try and keep the exterior and the land well-kept in the interim here. He shared that he took my recommendation to contact the county for an opportunity to crush materials on site and then sell them to the county. And so what his estimate is based on their current price would be a $200,000 deduction of cost for demolition of the building. So it's a step. At the same time, he also shared that estimates for demolition are now approaching $2 million versus $1 million. So the $200,000 materials monies are helpful, but they're a small dent. So he's continuing to be creative and look around and I will continue to share updates.
Moving on to 5D, Fourth of July fireworks update. I think we gave that last month. The idea they came up with, the good suggestions, you can fill on where we are.
Yeah, so last month we talked about putting in any road out to the point. That was something that was going to require, or excuse me, accomplish some of the requirements for being able to utilize that as a permanent shoot site moving forward. So I would encourage everybody to head down there. The public works department is working on it. It's not quite done yet, but should be wrapped up by week 10.
Yeah.
So it's, looks great and it's going really well, so.
Moving on, so. It opens up that whole tech area. It actually makes it easier for anyone utilizing it. So multiple purpose, so.
Absolutely. The way it was designed and the route that was designated will allow it access to the tent site. So it is something that we can continue to use year round.
Thanks. Number six, new business, 6A Moose Lake water light easement request.
Mayor, members of council, city minister. We're working on a double feeder line between the substations. And part of that is putting another line in between along the Highway 73. And eventually want to vacate the line that currently goes through there. But just getting the project started, the easement on Highway 73. And it's nicer to go on our property because if the state expands the right of way, they have to pay us to move those power lines. Fair enough. A few years ago when they had the summary free expansion project or rework, we had to move some of our lines. We had to pay those pocket projects there. And also eventually when we get this in place, we can vacate this other easement eventually. It goes through that basically center of the property. That would open up the orders so they can expand in that area. But I talked with the city attorney and maybe underground ordinance and the right of way ordinance, before you proceed, having the city attorneys do the paperwork on the easement. It's best to have your approval before.
How far off are we? We're up, the easement that goes into the ditch and it goes up sort of beyond that even.
Yep, you're up on the bank, top of the bank there on 73. And where this current easement is, it kind of goes through a swampy area. So it makes maintaining that right of way kind of difficult at times.
So David Johnson who owns that, the attorneys will do all the coordination with the easement?
Done with the attorneys, they said he ain't typing like the easements. Get prior approval, then give it to them, they'll take off on that.
Questions by the council? That David Johnson has no problems with this? He hasn't even seen this yet, sir. And Mr. Johnson has passed away, so it is dark. So then with that approval, then the attorney can move ahead with the easement change. Any other questions or motion? Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on, new business D, Forest Street reconstruction project schedule or schedule. Harley, what's on the stage? It's up to you.
So we got our first schedule. You'll find our schedule on page 90, by the way, sorry. We got our first one two weeks ago, something like that. Looked horrible. Looked absolutely horrible. They wanted to start third week in August, final completion by deer hunting? No, it was horrible. We're never going to get that done. Had a little discussion with the engineering group. They, whatever they did, they came back with this schedule. This one looks amazing. Let's jump all over it. Let's do it. Let's do it. Booked it up six weeks at least. Yeah. I think they're thinking like 64 days of actual construction is what they're hoping for. There is a few, there is what, eight or 10 days built in for that weather or something like, for the most part, I mean, it's only 800 feet or something. It's not the end of the road. So should be pretty good. And I think we've heard, I don't know how we did this, but.
You know, a little bit of pushback goes a long ways.
Yep. That I agree with. But what I don't, what I don't know how we did was get the pricing we got and the economy we got. That's what I don't have, I have no idea how we got that. So I think I, we got to take it and run for sure, hands down. But that's just my input. About can you?
So we've awarded the bid. With consensus or approval of this project schedule, so to speak, I will sign the contract and submit it. So I've not signed the official contract yet. I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware and in agreeance with the project schedule.
Phil, council, and this turns us around from starting in August to starting in July.
How are we going to reroute camping and notify campers and camping and how to get in out of here to the.
Yep. So the notification will be part of White's sign plan as far as detours and everything else. Last fall, we actually made provisions, they enhanced the campground and widened that level 50 feet to make that right-hand radius into the campground with trailer, more than wide enough for two-way traffic. The downfall is we are going to have to use the park, parking lot as the two-way street to go in and out. And that's, we just don't have an option. We could, I'm sure if we worked with them, we can open up that section of 4th Street that is right by the new pump house periodically, you know, all around construction, obviously shut it down for utilities and then get it back up to the rally surface, open it back up to the intersection and there we go. But there'll be some up and down, I'm sure with that. But for the most part, that would be, that would be the way to go in and out there. So it's going to be very, yes, it's going to be massive, but it's kind of what it is.
When are they going to start in July? Do they have a date?
So they actually say the 26th of June is when they want to start. I don't find that being realistic with contractors. Usually I would say after a long holiday weekend, Fourth of July, they probably would have a pre-约定.
They may do some staging.
I'm just saying, because don't they have the old-fashioned Fourth of July in the park?
So when we have our pre-con meeting with them, we're going to get into this really hard and bring that up to them that, hey, this is a deadline they have to meet. They have to have all those intersections open anyway, which is probably going to deter them to start after the Fourth, if they're nervous. Not to mention it's a holiday weekend, it's the end of the month. They're probably, they're always a week or two behind. It puts you right into that. It's going to be, I think, a really good mixture for the city, for contractor, for any of you, I think it'll be fine.
Phil, I totally agree. When you're pulling in there to the park, are you going to put signs, no parking on that one side? Because if you grab those other ones in the angle, they park there, you'll not get a fifth deal.
No, you'll, you'll get cut off. Absolutely.
Post that?
Um, we won't. It'll be part of White's sign plan. But yes, it will make sure that all those radiuses can be made, probably both in and out, however we get our, to make them freeze. Yep. Questions?
Yeah, we're looking for a motion. We wanted to make sure the council could accept this new timeline schedule. We would need a motion.
Not as written.
We need maybe consensus, just consensus.
If you're going to reestablish after the Fourth.
After a pre-bid is what I would say. That will have, it will have a better timeline. Even the bid documents, they have to have, they have to have parts open, they have to have 4th Street and burst, they have to have 3rd and burst, they have to have everything down there completely open. For that, egg of days.
Is it triathlon?
Triathlon.
So we've been working with them on all of these.
Or is it just those three? So they have to do, they have to take down their detour, build the intersection, make it so it's passable. So they have, they have a big push, a big stance.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. It's just more coordination between all of us.
So consensus with the new schedule?
Yes.
It's a goal. Moving on to 6C, 2022 Santer sewer lining project, project award.
Yes, so the city engineers have made a recommendation to award the project to Instaform Technologies. It happens to be the entity that did our lining project last year. That submitted the lowest bid in the amount of $290,101 based on their base bid. And so there, the city attorneys are looking at doing the base bid plus the add alternate was their recommendation. We have discussed this and it is something that we have the money for based on already having that $100,000 for the lining project initially. We'll be utilizing some of that for our GIS mapping system that we've talked about and a rate study. We will most certainly not be utilizing all of it and we are actually trying to accomplish a rate study with.
In a sort of.
In a sort of real water at no charge. So that's something that we're working on in the background. So we would have the money to do the add alternate as suggested or recommended by our city engineers.
And that would finish that whole line then all the way to the?
To the west side of the theater.
West side of the theater.
Yep.
If we're able to accomplish all that, then looking forward, we can look to move to other areas, whether that be a project in coordination with DOC or continue on with additional options. But that would at least complete that entire segment.
So council, questions in order, motion?
Motion to approve as an Instaform or what's it called? Instaform? Instaform? Sorry, I circled it. I blocked it out. A motion to use Instaform Technologies with the base bid of $290,101 and the alternate one bid of $3,317.20.
Do you have a second? I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. New business number D, this is the trail, 73 Trail Project, Carlton County Pay Application number five.
This is a standard pay application. Again, these monies will be submitted for reimbursement. The pay application request of all for number five is $55,679.22.
Have a motion from the council? Have a second? Was that quick? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Under 6C, this is another 73 Trail Project, change order number three.
So change order number three involves a culvert and a fix. I know a lot of people had mentioned there was a low point in the trail that there was extra water that was collecting on the trail. So once that was noticed this spring, the city engineers had to go in and kind of rework that area. Phil, you want to jump?
You don't mind you doing five? Keep going, I'm here.
So yeah, essentially this change order is to rectify the low spot that was collecting water and not allowing drainage. The total change order for number three is $13,707.50.
I think everyone saw where that was right past the fire department. I have a motion to accept the change order. Have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Under 6F, this is another 73 Trail Project, change order number four.
Yes, so this change order is for a hydrant riser. I don't know if you've noticed as well, along that same kind of section, a little further down the way, there is a fire hydrant that's currently under water. So in order to raise it up, which will be So in order to raise it up, which will be required, this change order rectifies that issue. The change order number four is in the amount of two-thousand-two-hundred-sixty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. All, with all these change orders, I just wanna make mention that we've had some really in-depth conversations and serious conversations with the engineers regarding fault liability. Is this something that just occurs, occurs and we wouldn't know that the grading was off? Or was this part of the original plan? Where some of that lies, we put a little pressure on, back on our city engineers, just to make sure that everybody's held accountable. And so these are two that are tough for us to swallow, but we have to put that pressure on. We pushed a little bit harder on this change order number four to the point where we are getting a lot for this money. They are also going to regrade around the area.
Yeah.
And that fill.
Correct, yep.
So with that push, I think we're getting more than our money's worth on this particular change order. So I just wanted to make everybody aware that we are working in the background to make sure that these are appropriate and yeah, we'll continue to do that.
We're, as a group effort, the mayor, administrator, myself, are, we're really looking into a lot of this. A lot of these just get thrown in quick and we're starting to realize how we need to look at them closer. If we miss one, just needs to shot right through and that's fine, whatever. But as far as, before they get to this stage, we need to, I need to start asking a lot more questions. And, and I really did with, with one that they brought up to the table that we ended up next name, but it was, it's like anything else. You know, we've got a lot of money to these people, owed to this company, a lot. And they do a great job, but we just, we just need to make sure they're, they're still working for us. One hundred percent. And we need to hold their feet to the fire and hold them pretty accountable. And there just needs to be a little bit more time dug in there and looked at. It's, it's easy to get looked over, we all get busy, but it's, it's something that we can't...
Due diligence.
Yep, absolutely.
There was an additional change order recommended that we did deny. That change order was for some signage on the trail that we were able to acquire or will be able to acquire the signs in-house and our public work staff will be able to put it up for a fraction of the cost of the change order. So just wanted to provide a little visibility to what we're doing in the background when we do receive these. And there's other stuff that's, you know, taking place to make sure that we do our due diligence.
So last year, I think we had about five or six that we dealt with that one meeting.
Correct.
Just talked about one of our departments being a lot of money in our budget. And so thank you for doing that because this is something that I think we need to live up to.
Yep, the wellhouse, that was a tough one. That was, there was a lot of... And all projects are different too. These trails, it seems to me, it seems like a really simple project to have, to have the change orders that are trying to come to the table, which we're trying to address. Not let them come to the table, sure, yeah, absolutely, so.
We do have them.
They do, absolutely, and I'm, and I'm not saying we shouldn't have them, but they need to get looked at.
I have a motion to approve change order number four. You have a second? Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Under six G, mill and overlay options. This is something that I had asked for.
Yep.
Just to give us an idea, but, but where and how?
At the last meeting, Danielle, it was, you asked me to look for, I believe it was two sections. We found, I kind of found what you were asking for, kind of, but as best as we could put together anyway. And it turned out to be a two-block section on Douglas Avenue, First Street to Third Street. It does have a little bit of utilities on it on the north block. There's, there's about three hundred feet of water main and then the intersection there has sanitary and water as well. But we were looking for the intersection, the sections of road that have the least, if not any, utilities in them at all. And I wanted to provide a one-block option for you and then a two-block option for you. So the first one you're looking at there is Douglas Avenue. It's, it's called out as number twenty-nine on our CIP list. So we've been doing this since twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty-two, we're just doing our first project. This is number twenty-nine, right? So, okay, this, this pricing is coming out to be about four dollars and twenty cents a square foot in mill shape and all of it. So that gives you that roughly that two-block area, including two intersections and starting, and falling short from the third or the north intersection of Third and Douglas just because of the utilities that are in that intersection we want to cover up, obviously, right? We gotta pick and choose a spot, start a muzzle, make it so it works for us, right? That comes out to just shy of a hundred thousand dollars, just a mill and all of it. The next option is up on Sioux Hill, it's Hickory Avenue. That, I left out the intersections completely because there's some serious utility construction that has to happen, both those, those intersections as well. So it's basically from edge of right-of-way line to edge of right-of-way line excluding the intersections, which was about three hundred. That's your four dollars and twenty, twenty cents a square foot, figured out to be about forty-one-five eighty to do that three hundred feet. And that's mill, shade and all of it.
How much was the cost in the first one?
It's a double, it's on that, that previous page, it's ninety-nine, seven, ninety-two. It's up in the upper right-hand corner, you can read my, my hand rating.
I just want the council to see some of this and if they're, what do we have, the twenty-ninth and the fifty-seventh?
Project.
Project, so they're probably twenty years out longer.
Way longer.
Thirty, thirty years out. So something I want that council to think about in this next month, if you wanna look at and tackle one of these. We'll have a better handle on the budget at that time on where we are with the projects that we're going and if there's any surprises. And we may not do anything with them this year, but maybe next year, we'll budget to do some kind of overlay on one of these. Just to get a handle on some of these that are so far out and they are so bad that, that we should do something someday.
I'll question. When the givers are here to do Fourth Street, I mean, wouldn't, because I know a lot of the cost comes into setting up.
Yep, mobilization.
Would this reduce the cost of one of these?
I sure ask them. They'll be in town for two and a half months. As soon as they get here and I get a little bit of a relationship with the contractor, I can take a look and see, see if they get some numbers. If, if you want me to get the numbers on those two areas, I will, absolutely.
Well, I would say the one that's the closest to what we're doing would be the Douglas, the twenty-ninth, that's the two blocks in town. And it's closest to the project we're, we're working on, that would probably make the most sense in my eyes.
It's pretty bad that I'm down there on a, between second and first, if I remember, that's really bad.
The guys hate going there because they stay there all day, because it takes the most money out of you. Just keep in mind, you are covering up water main that's seventy years old by doing that section.
What is, how many years out?
I get that dead, I totally do, I really do.
We may get it, we may get to there in thirty years.
We're just digging there last week, week and a half and we were, we were there till dark almost. And it's, and I personally saw it myself and it was not, it's old and it's undersized, but I get your concern, absolutely. Even a mill and overlay would...
We have to do something with some of these streets.
I get it, because that mill and overlay we decide to do, that'll be gone twice before we even get to put a pipe in the ground there.
I know.
I understand.
But if we tackle, to me, a reasonable amount, a little bit every year, every couple of years, we gotta do some of these that are so far out that, that I'll never see those ones down there.
Some of them that are, are worse too, I mean.
Thirty years, that would have me a hundred years, a hundred and two.
For me, I appreciated seeing this information, essentially as we look at next year's budget and we look at items and, and ways that, you know, when we have monies available, what can we have the most impact with? So keeping these figures in mind and as we plan and, and come August, as we start to look at things, I mean, it's, it's just gonna be really helpful. And if the council decides to implement some type of maintenance program, you know, we can look at that or at least continue to provide information for consideration.
Yeah, we have to at some point here. Thank you, I appreciate that and you will look more into it, more data for council for...
Absolutely, yep. Probably not next month.
In August then?
Probably in August, I'll have these numbers up.
Thank you.
Yep.
Moving on to six H, Riverside Arena Door Replacement Quotes.
Yep, in the packet, you'll see two quotes. This is a budgeted item for twenty-twenty-one, excuse me, twenty-twenty-two, I have audit on the brain, for twenty-twenty-two for the arena. So we have secured these two quotes and they come in, both of them come in under the budgeted amount.
Is it a recommendation to go with that sixteen gauge door for a little bit extra money or it doesn't matter?
I would, yeah, absolutely.
Any questions or, or a motion?
Well, it looks like the one's cheapest for twenty-five, direct twenty-five thirty, is that one on the door?
Correct.
And go with the ninety-nine dollar. So Northern, my motion would be for Northern Door and Hardware Inc. for the door, the code number twenty-two dash zero seven eight five, twenty-five thirty and then ninety-nine dollars for the sixteen gauge door.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Moving on to six J, Legacy of Excellence Gambling Permit.
Yes, the Legacy of Excellence is holding a sub of gala and with that, they'd like to have a raffle, so they are requesting the council approve a off-site gambling permit.
Add to Sewer Arena Event Center, correct. Will you make that motion? You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose? Motion carried. Six K, post-three-seven-nine gambling permit.
Yes, this again is an off-site gambling permit. This is for the American Legion for their Fourth of July activities and they are making a request to council to approve the off-site gambling permit.
I'll make that motion. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Six L, Debt Fund Balance Deficit.
So you'll see included in the packet, a proposed entry, journal entry from our auditors. So we were notified by our auditors of a legal compliance finding within our twenty-twenty-one audit. And what that entails is the finding stems from a state statute that requires the city levy for a hundred and five percent of the debt service amounts. So meaning the principal and interest payments combined and the annual figures of those for each of our debt service funds. So after not raising the levy for four years and then issuing some more debt, we have fallen below that state requirement and that's what that state statutes requires. So this initial communication essentially just allows us to be in compliance with the state statute by making this journal entry. So as written, this needs to be approved for our twenty-twenty-one audit. In addition, when they come and do the exit presentation next month, they are going to have a lot of information and recommendations for what needs to occur with the levy for this next budget cycle, so.
I think this is good, that we are at this point, that we have not overtaxed to the point where, okay, now we do have to raise the levy because we hit the point where that balances between debt and reserve. So we're right at the point where, to me, we should be at. We're not overtaxing, yet we do have reserve. So it'll, it'll be, to me, a good discussion when they go over that.
Absolutely. And the debt service funds are separate from the general fund. So we're actually taking monies from the general fund and putting them to the debt service funds. So it's not that we don't have monies in the general fund, enough monies in the general fund. It's how, when our bonds were issued, what the verbiage was and our bonds are issued based on being able to pay them through our levy. So because we haven't essentially assigned them sales tax or gas franchise fee or whatever these other monies are that we have coming in as revenue to be assigned to our debt payments, it leaves the debt service funds off on an island. So we need to make sure that we are assigning monies to them and the monies that are assigning to them come in through our levy.
And we still have the reserve that we need.
Correct.
Very good place with that reserve.
I think with the newest debt that we issued and then the, the debt service fund balance was just kind of dwindling. So at some point, whether before or five years ago, there was a sufficient fund balance in there and then it just kind of slowly started to dwindle down. And so it is something that they caught this year and that will have to be addressed.
Question, under these bonds, is there a way to make an addendum to the verbiage in there or is that set in stone?
I've had those same questions and we actually looked at just doing internal journal entries and utilizing some of the sales tax monies or natural gas franchise fees or things of that nature in order to cover our net service payments, because that's essentially what we're doing anyways as those monies come into the general fund. Because of the verbiage of how those other entity or other forms of revenue were passed, it, it wasn't identified in the sales tax that we could utilize it for bond payments. So because of the verbiage in, in those other items, we now are at the point where we just have to use levy and, and general fund monies.
So then can we change that verbiage?
We can ask.
I, I think that we should because I don't see any point in us raising a levy. We're going to have to, as the mayor stated, at some point, but we all know that a five percent levy increase is gonna increase our income about twenty-five thousand dollars. And it's the thirty percent of the population that's paying a hundred percent of the bill and there's no, there's no reason for that in my, my mind. I'd rather go backwards and see, can we change that verbiage or, or how, or make an amendment to something and, and make it right? Because there's no reason to tax people that are paying a hundred percent of the bill.
And I think our arbiters will, will have some suggestion for us and they may be able to answer that exact question.
And that's what we initially looked at owing this year and we're kind of strapped with how that, how it's verbed now. So they can provide a recommendation as far as would they recommend we do that or would they recommend we use other monies? We talked about using the monies that coming from the township as part of utilities and rent and, you know, things of that nature. There's monies coming in there, it's just a matter of, it has to be identified and defined and because it's not currently, we are all of compliance.
This is information alone yet at this time.
I actually need a motion to approve because we are transferring funds from our general fund to our debt service funds.
I'll make a motion to do those transfers.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Moving on to six M, Verizon Wireless Utility Easement Request.
Yes, so I received a request from Verizon Wireless for an easement. What they're looking to accomplish is essentially putting an antenna on top of the Hillside Manor East to increase service in the downtown area. This project and, and conversation started prior to my arrival, so I know that there were a couple of solutions thrown out there as far as the water tower, other types of service towers, things of that nature. Thus far, we've been unable to reach an agreed-upon approach with Verizon. When they came to us with this request, I did send information to the relevant city departments and we have some utility conflicts within the requested easement. And as a, there's sewer main on the south side, we have a conflict with a manhole as well. So at this time, what they're requesting is, is not something I would recommend for the city as it stands currently. So open to further discussion, I just wanted to make sure that I communicated from a city perspective and our city departments there. We do have some issues with what's, what's being presented here.
They were not willing to pay for the move, movement or correction of any utilities, right? utilities, right?
Correct.
So that's why, why wouldn't we give them easement when they're not going to pay for all the work that needs to be done?
Correct.
So open up for discussion or motion. If we turn this down, where do we go, where does Verizon go from the?
I would like to open conversations back up with them and just kind of see if, if they want to increase their service in the area, then they're going to be willing to work with us. This isn't what's best for the city.
This costs us more money than we're not budgeting for.
Mm-hmm.
If they really wanted this, then
This pertains
And it was so important to them, then why wouldn't they help us with the?
This pertains to the Verizon customers only? Motion deny that utility easement, right?
Second? Great second. All in Further questions? So you will talk to them again, see if there's something else that we could possibly work out or?
Absolutely. It just has to be in the best interest of the citizens, right? Correct.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose. 6N, Neighborhood Revitalization Program Repayment Request.
Yes, I just wanted to, this is kind of for your information only. We were notified by Carlton County of a repayment of indebtedness that is not budgeted for. It's something that we really weren't aware of. I know I wasn't aware of. So it looks like we owe them some monies starting in 2022 and through 2024. I just wanted to make you aware, I'm going to request, make a work request with the county that we combine some of the payments and put them into the budget within the scope of the next couple of years. So whatever that looks like, I will continue to work on that. It was a little bit of a surprise, not anything that we can't handle, but we're going to try and, and make it work in an upcoming budget versus this year.
This is the kind of thing that has happened when you have change order of administrators. It seems like there's always something that is not passed on. It happened with, with Talpat and with Pat and with Tim and Noah, Katie. And it'll, it's just something we have to deal with. It's the demolition of the Moose building.
I recall that discussion, but I don't recall us borrowing money. I thought that there was a, a requirement that we, it had to be a parking lot or something that we couldn't build on. There wasn't anything that the city council would redo that we're going to be paying them back money that I recall.
I don't recall it either.
So we're going to continue to look into it. If any monies are required, we'll make sure that we can do so within a budget versus, you know, just throwing it out there and trying to make it work. This kind of brings about a secondary discussion too, just, we'll be, at the end of June, we'll be reviewing all department heads' budget with them and, you know, take a looking at everything. It's, it's tough with gas prices and the way everything's going. I mean, things are a little tight and we want to make sure we stay on top of it. Times are tough, everything's a little more expensive, so not the time to just be throwing stuff in like this. We're just going to keep working on it and we'll have some updates after. We do kind of a mid-year evaluation of where we're at and just keep working on it.
At the time when we made this agreement, how that was to be paid back or what the requirements are, to me, I understood it that, and the way Tim explained it, that we would be demolishing the building and if we don't sell it, which we haven't, then the money is covered by the county.
Yeah.
But when I read through this loan agreement, if you guys have it, I'm hearing a little bit different story. And now I understand a little bit why we had an offer on the land and Katie said, no, it has to be sold for $24,000, $25,000.
Sure.
So now I understand why she said that. And of course, the person didn't want to buy it for that dollar amount. It's such a small lot. It's not even a full lot. So this was a little bit of a surprise, and I think the county will work with us and allow us to budget for it instead of coming out of our general fund, because we do not have it as a budget item for this year. You need, do you need any added information? Water Environment Federation Auto Sampler Package Grant Award.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to, okay, so a couple, was it two council meetings ago where we presented the opportunity for testing for our phosphorus management plant?
Yeah, it was. I would decide to table until fall.
Correct. So we, Phil made the recommendation a couple months ago that we weren't going to have, or we weren't going to act at this time. I believe it was a $12,000 proposal for testing that our engineers were throwing at us with our phosphorus management plant. So in the background, Phil applied for this program in order to acquire an automatic sampler, and we have been granted, we awarded a grant for one. So Phil, do you have a dollar value on that?
Yeah, so the unit itself is, I think, about $4,000 bucks, and our rental fees for that program that we were going to have to do would have been about $8,000 to $9,000 just for 10 months to do this. We're still going to have to pay S H a little money to take all the data that'll be collected and sent in to analyze everything, figure out where our spikes are, figure out kind of what, where the problem is, what we're thinking where the problem is, but we, we cut that number down by at least $8,000 bucks. And we have a new piece of really cool equipment that I can use all the time, so that's possible.
So this is informational right now, and congratulations on getting the award.
Congrats.
It's a great day if that saves us money, we're all for it.
Can I sit down now?
Yes, please.
Okay, nice.
Thanks for the
Hey, no problem.
Ask Phil about the ATV problem.
Yeah.
I love that. I know.
All right.
Terrible.
Thank you, Phil.
Yep.
7B, Minnesota Department of Health Source Water Protection Competitive Grant Award.
Yes, so this is another grant that we applied for. I know this has been mentioned previously. This is another $4,500 grant that has been secured. So all in all, I believe we're
14.5.
About 14.5. The project is going to cost us about $19, $20. So we have secured funding for 75% of our budget.
So we're actually covering expenses up here for this neighborhood revitalization. Keep it up, Phil.
We'll just keep on going. Yep.
Thank you. That's great news. 7C, Landen Foundation Grant.
Yes, this is again something that was kind of shared with Economic Development Authority, and I just wanted to make the council aware. We are looking for all opportunities that are available to get funding to start to spur development in the area. So this opportunity came up with the Landen Foundation. They are willing to award grants in up to $150,000. So I did submit a letter of interest for $150,000 for, to be utilized for development up where the small area development plan has currently been established. So idea behind this would be that $150,000 would be utilized to start to move city infrastructure into the development to try and help spur sales and, and future development. So there were a lot of submissions, there were over 300 letters of interest for over more than $25 million. Long way to go, but more or less just wanted to provide visibility to things that we're working on in the background, just to try and continue to make progress.
You don't apply, you don't get it.
You don't apply, you don't get it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Eight committee and board meeting minutes. Moose Lake Area Fire District, we have none. Moose Lake Park Board Recreation, none.
Yes, so with our early meeting this month, we're just kind of out of cycle. So I will make sure that they're included in the next month's package.
Moving on to nine announcements, regular Moose Lake City Council meeting Wednesday, July 13th, 4:00 p.m., right here. Moose Lake Economic Development Authority, Wednesday, June 15th, 12:00 p.m., the City Conference Room. Moose Lake Water and Light Commission, regular meeting Tuesday, June 21st, 1:00 p.m., Water and Light Office. Moose Lake Housing Redevelopment Authority Board, Monday, June 13th, 11:00 a.m., Hillside Manor Office. Moose Lake Area Fire District, Tuesday, June 14th, 6:30 p.m., Emergency Response Center. Now the park board one, that will be changed to 3:00 p.m. the next month.
5:00 p.m. So it went from 6:30 up to 5:00.
You're right. Moose Lake Park Board meeting Monday, July 11th, 5:00 p.m., right here. Do you have a motion to adjourn? So, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose. Motion carried. Thanks, everyone.